I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting, May 3, 2021. Take a moment and have a minute of prayer, please. Father God, we come to you tonight, we thank you, Lord, for your grace and your mercy. Father, we just ask that you would be with us tonight as we make decisions for the city. Lead us, guide us, and direct us in all the things that we do here, Father. Ask that you would be with our servicemen, our EMTs, our police officers, Father God, the ones that are our servicemen that are here and enter for cities, Lord. Ask that you would just be a part of our meeting, and we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Very pleased to be with you today, I'm the mayor of the United States of America. I'm the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a meeting agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ma'am, thank you. Public appearance is next. Do you have something going?
My name's Steve Johnston. Mayor Green, City Council members, thank you for approving the road repairs in Laurel Lakes. That's fantastic. I know it's coming to be done soon. I'm here on behalf of another lady that passed away in our subdivision that was seeking to do a community garden, and asking the City Council if they would be willing to use some of the city property for a city garden. Maybe a 1 to 2 acre piece of land, maybe a $1,000 to $2,000 annual budget to cover the cost of getting plants for this, and access to city equipment if needed to take care of it. Wouldn't be asking the city to do any of the work whatsoever. We would do all the work, but we think it would be a good thing for the community. So I made a little list of what I've asked for, a couple copies, and that's it.
I know that we, I've spoken with you, we've had a couple conversations about it. The 24th Street would be a good spot, but we are doing the, we've got the project that's gonna pretty much, it's already underway, so. Kelsey, you know any other land we have that we could, that we could use more space for community life?
There's a lot next to, let's see, it's next to 1266 Pickens Street that the city owns, which is if you go up to the top of Blue Ridge, make a right on Pickens Street, there's a house, one house, I think it's the next lot that the city owns that.
That's Marsha Hooton's?
It's next to Marsha Hooton's. Trying to think offhand, we're just something that, just make it. Because I know we're getting ready to tear one down, but that, the one we're tearing down will combine with the lot that's next to it that the city owns.
Right.
And when that's, when they're combined, we'll be putting that up to get rid of it. I can give you a list of city-owned properties, that might be the best way.
It really doesn't, really doesn't matter to me as long as it gets sunlight and you guys approve it. I don't really care where it is.
I just, I mean, off the top of my head, I can't.
Right, that's fine. That's fine.
I can tell you exactly what is here that the city owns, instead of just guessing. I guess isn't that what it is?
Right. I just want you guys to look into it and let me know what you think.
Sylvia, it actually mentions something similar.
I know you don't, I think you guys have a tractor or something. There's a possibility that maybe somebody we know could provide the attachment for that, and I don't know if the tractor works that way, but.
Isn't it doable?
Just access to that.
You wouldn't just, you wouldn't easily be able to let people drop the heavy equipment without.
Could the maintenance guys, like, till it and get it ready? Like, it would be easier, I think, for them to actually do that than it would be for us to allow someone else to use the equipment.
Right, that makes sense. That makes sense.
For liability reasons. But if it's on city land anyway, I can't really see that being an issue.
That would, that would be great. We would take everything from there.
In the meantime, Mr. Alberg and his wife, they have the school here.
Okay.
And they're gonna do a garden, right? Is it gonna be a community garden as well?
Yes.
So maybe you could partner until we can find something.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just that case of me, and I'll pull, I know there's like, there's a file that has some of that stuff already there, but I can pull and see what else is around.
Okay.
So.
That'd be great.
Makes a good idea.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
As far as the paving, I know we had actually discussed that last time, right after the meeting, I had an update for a chair for four to six weeks is what they were looking at coming here.
From the last time you spoke with me?
Well, that was from the, no, that was from the last meeting.
Right.
Which was the.
I spoke to, when I spoke to them too, they said it would be a little bit.
So it should be about a month, I would say, from now. So they were wrapping up a couple of the projects and moving.
That's perfect.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the public hearing? Public hearing for zoning ordinance revision, do I open that up now for?
You already had your required public hearings, you don't have to have another one. So you can just save this for below where you get it down.
Okay. All right. So we move on and get approval for the minutes for April 12, 2021. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from April 12, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 12, April 12, 2021.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, ma'am. Department reports. Lieutenant, do you want to come and give your Cherokee County Sheriff's report?
So for the month of April, it's a good thing we were pretty slow on the Old Nelson Road location. We were out there several times with the domestic situations that were going on, and there was an arrest made at that location, and then a couple of suspicious vehicles at Edmonds and Park. I have read your email, Kelsey, about the weekend coverage for the motorcycles and stuff with kids. Just sort of basically in the room, you can't ride ATVs and stuff like that on the streets. A, it's not safe. B, we don't let kids on because they're not out here obeying the traffic laws. But C, you can't be sighted and they can't be towed. We usually give warnings, but it wants repeats.
I actually stop the kid twice and have conversations with him because I don't want him to be in trouble, but.
Well, and it might be something where we go speak directly to the parents and say, "Look, we're not gonna deal with the kid. We're gonna come address this with you next time." So maybe that kind of deterred that. Just to give an update, and I was hoping he was gonna be here tonight, but he's actually doing some work with our undercovers, but if you saw on Facebook, we had some promotions on Friday, and Corporal Jack Fulhamwater, one of our K9 guys, is actually gonna be my right-hand man at Ball Ground, which we're planning on opening tentatively right now, June 1st.
What's his name again?
So, Jack Fulhamwater. He'll be my corporal, and we're looking at two to four deputies now instead of just four people total. So we'll have four to six people starting on June 1st.
Good.
And that went out today.
And I did tell the officers at Park, thank you for being able to pay, and for just snacks and drinks, and please come back and talk.
Good, good. And as always, if y'all need anything, just let me know.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor's report. So Pickens County came by today, and we donated the hopper to them. They didn't need it, they didn't need it, so they're gonna see if that's usable. And I know that when we had spoke before about things county, we could, we could do things city to city, correct? Okay, so we were good there. And Kelsey, I believe, did you have a truck?
They're getting home tomorrow.
What did we donate?
The hot, it was for the, whenever they have ice on the road, and they used to put the gravel.
That's what we used to.
They didn't, they were using gravel. They used it for gravel, and the gravel would get on the road, and then brush it off. And then the landlords would pick up the gravel and then pitting things with it. But it hasn't been used since Joey was here.
Yeah.
So Ricky had been trying to get rid of it, and Sylvia just suggested asking the county if they wanted it before we tried to send it to auction. So as soon as we called, they had, Pickens County had a guy from Risen Streets was here for about an hour, and they were very happy with it, so.
Okay, next thing is gonna be a finance report. Miranda, so glad to see you here tonight.
Well, thank you. Okay, so a couple important dates coming up. As of June, the first meeting in June, which I guess is going to be on the 7th, that needs to be, that will be the presentation of the budget coming up.
June the 7th?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So I'll submit that to the council then, and then we'll need to schedule a special meeting later in the month, so we can get the budget approved as well as the amendments to this fiscal year, so.
Let me know when you have time to go over that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And get any changes and anything that we have that, you know, we're in the moment that you have to make to the 2021 budget.
Yeah, yes, sure. So, general fund is looking at 722,744. The special reserves was three, which is the old Cherokee, 75,197. I know in March, we had expenditures of 27,893.
That's a little fast, hold on a minute. Let me, I wanna get back there. What did you say? This is, are you one of the current squads?
The current balances.
Okay.
This was as of last Thursday, probably.
Yeah.
So squash five, that's Cherokee?
The squash five is the new Cherokee.
And it already has 4,000, 400, 7,200 in there?
728.
19 that goes in this week.
Plus another 19, okay, good.
And then the squash for Pickens, which was crazy high this past month.
Squash two?
That's Pickens Squash 2020.
Okay.
So the dispersment for April was 27,309. That's, that's pretty substantial.
So this 198 is not included in that?
198 is, no.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Is the balance thereafter?
Yeah, 198,000 is included in that 27. And then the cash reserve is 166,259. The squash five is 472,728. Pickens Squash two, which is the old Pickens Squash, has a balance of 586,400. And then the squash four, which is the old Cherokee one, is 663,991, and the other two.
Pickens Squash two, Risen Streets, have we paid everything out for Pickens, for Risen Streets?
No, Pickens Squash two, right now we're at 585.
Everything that was being presented. We're trying to use up what we came up for three, and we came in for that stuff, and not the one we're.
The squash three, which is the old Cherokee, is the one that we just spent 27,000 out of to finish up paying for those two paving projects. And what else is it?
For the year meeting that we had, the special committee, let's go ahead and make a note there and look at our capital improvement while we, while we can.
Bye.
Okay. We'll have the numbers there, so we can see what's feasible, what's not feasible. All right, go ahead.
Other than that, that's all I've got. We've got a couple, you know, we're winding down this fiscal year, and so going into next month, we'll have those big projects we gotta get completed, as far as getting the budget approved and the amendments completed, and then rolling over into the new fiscal year, we'll need to concentrate on adopting the new trade for Cherokee.
I know we talked about bringing in another full-time maintenance, making that a full-time.
Yes.
Is there dollars for that there?
I believe there will be, coming into this next fiscal year. Again, we'll have to look at our revenues, but our revenues are extremely high, you know, more than what we anticipated this year, so I think going into the new fiscal year, it's gonna be the same scenario. So we'll base that, we'll look at the history of that.
I know that that, because that's one of the findings on our audit, on our audit, we, it went from 36 hours a week to 32 hours a week is considered full-time.
Yeah, that's one of the notes that I've got down to look at, factoring in for a full-time in that one.
He needs to be full-time.
He does.
Your husband's.
Yeah, we talked to him about it, but we wanted to make sure, I was wanting to wait till she.
I'm sure this will be completely.
Okay.
We just gotta get the amendments, I gotta get all the amendments completed for this fiscal year, so that way I can kind of see, get a balance of where we're at, you know.
Look at your schedule, and then send me something to let me know what works, if we, um, free any even more, tell her any more.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then once I get that, I'll put the, I'd like to put some capital improvement stuff together for the council, so they can, we can review it. We've been wanting to do it, but we wanted to get that bid.
I think the, yeah, once we get through, that's gonna be a kind of a whole.
And I think we should have a bid and help back for Kennesaw Avenue.
Right.
That'll give us a better idea of where we can stay on the squash.
Yeah.
And our back line. Any questions, council, about financial, our financial report?
The auditors are coming to the next meeting round.
She said if we need it, we can. There really wasn't a lot of findings. You could take a look at what we have, we'll discuss it in a minute, but there just wasn't a lot. I mean, she could come tell you the same thing, she wrote her report, but not gonna change anything. Everything's already set to the state.
I didn't know if that was like an old procedure, because they were, I remember them every year since I've been.
Normally they do, but like I said, this, there was an emergency, and I mean, if it was, if the findings were some major findings, I'm sure you would wanna do that too. But if we have questions, maybe we have more than one or two questions that can't be answered, be emailed, we wouldn't get them to come in in June and just answer anything else.
It's just time to let her come in, go over the whole thing with us, and explain everything to us.
Well, that's fine.
You have more time to do it. You might as well have it done.
We'll go ahead and discuss it tonight, and then if you want to.
Yeah, that's fine. We didn't, we didn't find out today until we went at 4:00.
That's fine. Emergencies happen.
Yeah.
Next up is Cherokee County Fire Department. Kelsey, I want you to do that, since she's been chasing that.
There was a total of 25 calls for service in city limits. One was a non-dwelling fire. There were nine EMS incidents calls, 15 other calls for service, eight ambulance transports. Average total response times to fire, 2 minutes 33 seconds. Average total response times to EMS incidents, 10 minutes 49 seconds. And that was for the, it was just for the city.
Do you want to, you were, you were, you've been on the contact?
No.
You don't want to.
And we paid it, but it's, we're still having to get a confirmation from them, it was okay.
Okay.
Does that mean the auditor, I think that's what it was for.
So we paid based on what the auditor said?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the county came, or the county came back and said it was $1,000 more than what the auditor said. We kept the check already for what the auditor said, and then told them that they needed to prove to us that it was different.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And they haven't got it.
I think it was, yeah, it was still counted.
The county said it was moving with auditor, as it was. So, they weren't using the, the minister in law. Okay.
Staff, so I'm, I'm sure I'll kind of talk to Sarah Friday in two minutes how it's always been done, and have the agreement with how they said to do it, so.
Okay. Next up is unfinished business, discussing vote, opening of sealed bids for AD Blue Ridge Avenue. So we have a total of four sealed bids here. I'll open the first one. Do we need an agenda? Okay, the first one is from North Georgia Roll Off Services LLC. Should be the last page. So that's just a reference list for you to call me. And is bid amount for this one here from?
Roll Off.
North Georgia, yeah, Roll Off Services LLC is 13,800.
Need to have cutting free lid on them.
Yeah.
Sure. I think it's in the bid tag.
Yeah, it is in the bid tag.
Who's that?
This one is from building demolition, it says it's from. 11,800, the total for that one.
Getting better.
It is getting better.
He actually probably has the worst part of it.
This one is from Southern Environmental Services. I need to go check with theirs. Oh, they're lost it. This one is for 13,800 as well. I don't see what it's for.
So, Jason, do you have yours?
So we had North Georgia Roll LLC, 13,800, ICG, 11,800, Southern Environmental Services, 18,700, and Southern Demolition, 13,800.
The lowest bidder, he hates qualified, got everything, so.
I mean, for, probably, like everybody else, I'll sub some of this stuff. Anything that we need to do other than, than just vote on who we want. Can I get a motion to accept a bidder? Let's open it up.
I'll make a motion to, to accept a bidder.
For ICG, or for somebody else?
Was ICG the?
ICG's the lowest bidder.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that we open the bid for ICG.
Okay. Okay, Janice. All in favor? Ma'am, thank you.
This is 11, about, what?
If you guys wanna take a look at their IAT packages, come when we get finished, you're welcome to. Discussing vote on IGA with Cherokee County for the Pickens Street Park project. We should have a copy, it's the same as, it's the same type of agreement that we have with Cherokee County for Kennesaw Avenue drainage project.
And this is for the plan that's already in our capital improvement.
It is, it's already in our cap on. It was the second project that we had, that, we've already done phase one of this project, so phase two just requires the construction drawings and then the IGA with, or the MSA with Cherokee County, just saying that they're gonna handle the squash paperwork and the project management of the project.
Well, we've all agreed that we weren't gonna do anything if this was done down here.
No, we didn't. We're, let me find my own.
We was in agreement, we was gonna fix the ball, the ball court. Maybe use marking parking lot.
I have all the minute, I have all of our minute notes here, y'all are welcome to go through them, we go through them now, but that was not the case. We've already, we're in phase one. What we were trying to do is get phase, to get our bid ready to go here, so we would be able to do our second project.
I'm making motion to table it till this job down here is done.
Why would we table it? We're a million dollars in our backlog for squash. You don't just do one squash project at a time.
There's no blame up there to spend $250,000 on that little bitty spot.
Well, we have already been to, majority of people that's in downtown Pickens, they want the park, they're in favor of the park.
Where you gonna put it? I mean, they should know room.
There is room up there. We already have to have basketball court. We're gonna improve our basketball court and pave our park too, which is part of our cap on group plan.
Well, we can go on it.
You made a motion.
I'm making a motion to table it until this project down here is done, and then we can look at it.
I see. I bet you do, because both of y'all have done nothing but hold up squash projects since you got on this board.
I thought we was gonna.
You don't, you don't even show up half the time and are prepared. No, you're not, and it's, you don't, you're supposed to be doing what the citizens want, not what you want.
No. We can vote on it, so if you got the votes.
You can, you can vote on it, David, but what you do is you get around and you, you get around and you just work with everybody. Your son over here is gonna vote with you. You're not doing what's best for the city.
Have you went up there and looked?
Yes, I have, and we also have a rendering that says there's plenty of space, and we also have Cherokee County that says there's plenty of space.
You might as well be doing it.
Thanks, we didn't finish with that. Do we have, I know we have, and we have plenty of signatures.
Can we save the signatures?
Yeah. We have 42 here, we have nine from Laurel Lake that's not on there, and we have 90% of the tracks that is up at, in Nelson Ridge, Nelson Oaks, and Haversham Way. And we didn't even try to get the ones from Laurel, we didn't need them. But this is all from downtown Nelson. This is the people that wanna see that park finished. Their kids use this park. It's the park that they want.
We're gonna redo the basketball court and parking lot, but not 250,000, they just know room up there. They get, the parking lots for the church, right?
Parking lots for people that are coming to use that ball field if they want to, it's for the church, it's for anybody that's up there on that hill.
There just ain't no property there. How much land we have?
David, we have a rendering that says differently.
Didn't you say that'd be downsized?
No, we're actually making the, the court is actually bigger than, than what's up there now. And it's a multi-court that kids can use. Some of the parents that we, that we checked that got up there and basically said, "Hey, we like our kids here, so we know where they're at. We don't want them all the way down here at this little park down here." But 42 signatures from downtown here in Nelson, and you guys are just voting it down because you don't wanna, you don't wanna do it? That's not right.
It's tabled till we get this project done down here. It could be 600.
It's not tabled till we get, just because you say it's tabled, doesn't mean it's tabled, Nathan. You're one person.
We've been waiting on this project.
And there, and I could, all of the paperwork on why it's been held up.
Well, we, we need to focus on getting something.
That's, that's because you don't do multiple projects. The county's. That's because you don't do multiple projects. The county's handling everything for you. The only thing that you have to do, Nathan, is let the county do their job with spending the SPOS money that they've given to the city for the citizens. That's my tax dollars too. I want those kids up there to have a place to go and play. Martha, do you want them to have a place to play?
I'd like to see the basketball court and, you know, that improved.
And, and in order to do that, we have to have construction drawings and an MSA agreement. Susan, do you wanna see it done?
Oh, absolutely. I see the kids there all the time.
James, do you wanna see it done? Then we have a vote.
There was, there not something about the water lines that we were gonna have to change?
They've already been, they've already been handled. He's, he's already paid for the water line to be moved, and it's already moved. It has nothing to do with that.
Well, I knew, I knew there was...
She's talking about the water time, you're right.
I knew there was the lines that had to be removed and...
The water tank belongs to the city.
Right, I understand that.
And, and so there's, that's a new point. When, when the county was out there, they said it would be a great landmark to paint that thing and put a seal on it, keep it there. Why would you not keep it? I mean, it's less than tearing it down.
The water line was abandoned.
I knew that there was something about a water line that had to be moved, you know, before doing it.
Which motion? Can we get a motion to vote on the table, all in favor of motion, of tabling the, of tabling the park?
I think we should table it. So more we could all go up there and look and...
Martha, I called you and tried to get you to go look.
Well, you know, it worked.
I, I understand that, but we have Saturday and Sunday, and that's what the people, but I mean, I understand your decision if that's what you want. But again, we've got a million dollars in backlog, and I don't know about anybody else, but as a taxpayer, I don't like that.
Right.
I'm a taxpayer. I live here.
I want to see the go, the basketball area.
What's holding up the vote? Why are you voting no if you wanna see that done? I'm just asking.
Right, but I mean, I want to go up there and see.
What kind of budget are y'all talking about this feeling?
Can I say something?
Would you just see as a total person, we finished the little vote?
Yeah, I'll finish you on it.
Well, it's two different things, and that's why I wanna say something.
There were, there were three. Are y'all solid on your three voting to table?
But it's two different items, I think, and I think that's what the confusion is.
Well, I'd like to go, uh, go up there and look, but that's...
There's your rendering. That's exactly what it looks like. What, I mean, we've been up there to that park. What is there to see?
Is the go, the basketball area gonna stay where it's at, or is it gonna be moved?
It's gonna stay where it's at, only it's gonna come back towards the water tower a little bit. There'll be a retaining wall, which is what this is, and then there'll be a, a screen, um, or a thing around it to keep the ball from going into the road.
Right.
But we've been looking at this for two years. It's, it's the same thing that we've been looking at for two years. So it's, it comes down to, do we wanna do what the citizens want, or do we wanna do something different?
Right. So in this area around here, is there any construction?
This area is a picnic shelter, is all it is, and it's a prefab. It's not some fancy something. It's got a picnic table if people wanna go up there and, and have a sandwich.
Right.
That's all it is.
There's no risk on rent, I know.
No, there's not.
Can I explain something with what we've got? There's two different bets that are up. There's one that's simply for the IGA with the county to work with it. Then there's a separate one that has to do with construction drawings. So if you wanna table the whole thing, that's separate from saying that you're gonna work with the county, 'cause that at least...
The IGA doesn't permit you spending any money. They're just saying if you provide, if you wanna do it, then can you totally whatever they do.
Yes.
The next one, we're gonna, the next one we're...
And, and by having a capital, we save a considerable amount of money.
It doesn't go with the initial estimates that Route Design had sent over that were the, was the quarter million dollar, where the prices were very high. That was why the county had stepped in, 'cause they had seen those drawings and said that the prices were astronomical.
Right, and, and by them administering, um, and overseeing the construction part of it, then we do not have to pay an outside party to do it. County will do it for free.
Yes, the county's gonna do, they will absorb all the administrative costs, all the, all the paperwork that goes along with SPOS that has to be submitted to the state and everything else.
And there's just one other thing I'd like to mention. I don't quite understand is, um, I don't know why we can't do more than one project at a time. I don't know.
There is no reason.
Is there, there's no reason.
Because the burden is not on the city. The burden is back on the county. The county's agreed to do the project for us.
Are you changing your vote, or are you keeping it the same?
So the ICG, or IGA with Cherokee County, is their drawings?
No, the IGA with Cherokee County is where Cherokee County says to the city, hey, city, we're willing to manage our SPOS dollars that we've given you. We're gonna do the, we're gonna do this, the state forms. We're gonna do the project management. We're, we're gonna do the bid for you, and we're gonna do all the paperwork. So they're managing that for us where we don't have to.
Right, there's no money involved.
There's no money involved in it. It's just Jerry Cooper gave it to us for free.
It's just like them saying that they'll help us with other projects, or they'll help us with other projects. It's just an agreement to help us with that project when we do start it.
If you don't give them plans or anything, they won't do anything.
Yeah.
What's this that you're from Route Design, your sixteen thousand dollars?
That's gonna be nine C. That's the next...
That's your drawing. You have to have construction drawings for any project.
So Cherokee County ain't gonna do the construction drawings?
They can't do the construction drawings. They can, they, they don't have a department.
That's nine C on here. That's why I was saying it's two different votes. If you're gonna vote, you can vote to have an agreement with the county to work with them to do a project, but if you're gonna handle something, I would go ahead and do an agreement so that whenever something is decided, even if you do want to tabling a portion of it, you at least have an agreement in place for that part.
I'm redoing the basketball court and parking lot, but the two hundred and something thousand dollars is just ridiculous on that little spot.
You're going back to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it was then.
I think the budget was like seventy-five, wasn't it, originally?
The thing about it is, is it's gonna be bid out. You're gonna get, and Cherokee County's gonna bid it for you. You're gonna get the best price on it. It's not like we're having to go out and do the bidding. And they've got a lot of people that can do that bidding, because they've just finished, they did multi-courts in, um, in Cherokee in two locations, in a Y and also the park behind the, the YMCA. So they, they have people that can do that. There's a budget on there that was in our capital improvement plan. Doesn't mean that that's what it's gonna cost. You won't know what it's gonna cost until we get the engineer drawings and get bids in on it. He said on the average, those courts are about seventy to eighty thousand dollars apiece to do them right. Right now, we've got a piece of asphalt up there for those kids to play with. That's all they have. With, with a million dollars sitting in our budget with, for SPOS backlog. That's three, that's three cycles on it.
We're fixing to spend a bunch of it.
Has nothing to do with roads and streets. This is parks and wreck.
I'm talking about this wall and this basketball court.
There's plenty of money in it for that. There's plenty of money in there for that.
Is anybody changing their vote on the motion to table?
Well, what are we tabling, first of all?
You're tabling the IGA with Cherokee County. That's what the motion was.
Or the project, yeah, whatever.
Now, you could, I don't, I don't know if you wanna withdraw your motion to table this one and wait and do it on the next one. That's up to you.
That's like...
One of them's not good without the other, is it? I mean...
No, David, it's not. It's not any good without the other. So you can vote on the IGA with them if that's what you wanna do, and then, and then you can table the drawings, which will still push this project out, which is not what the citizens want for the, in this town. And that's not in your tracks. That's in your downtown area. This is sad.
Do you want to move forward?
Yeah, we can move forward.
Can you see who's opposed?
Who's opposed?
To what?
To the motion to table the IGA.
What is, Martha, what is your vote?
David and Nathan want to table it. Susan, do you want to table it?
No.
James, do you want to table it?
No.
Martha, do you want to table it?
Absolutely. Go ahead and table it.
Okay. Because, I mean, I just like the people to vote because they're gonna watch.
I mean, I want us to go up and look and see and, you know.
So I would just put it back on the agenda for the next one, and then y'all decide what to do.
Yeah, that's fine.
When they get to proper survey, when we can see what it is, we'll table it before we go up there and make the vote decision.
I think we have a survey.
Yeah, we have a survey on it. It's states, though. I didn't see it happening on the first...
There's a survey on file. I don't know what they have to do to get it, but I have a survey on file, though.
Joe Jared surveyed that years ago, back in two thousand and... Well, if they don't see markers anywhere.
It's an old survey, but I don't like, there's probably...
Little rebar just about sticking in. When we get down to really flagged.
Yeah. Well, that's part of the construction drawings, isn't it?
It is.
It is.
And they know where your lines are, and we can table wherever it's running, which...
Well, that's part of the drawings.
You gotta get a vote for the table and put up your recorder.
Okay. Can I get a vote to table this project like we have every other SPOS project, please?
Is this for C?
Mm-hmm.
No, this is for B, so I'll record for the minutes.
It was three to two in favor of tabling.
We're making a motion to table the whole thing.
I just, we'll just say that I have it in a minute.
Are we saying one more table and it can do?
It means that context might have wasn't set otherwise.
Got it.
Next up is, um, discussing vote on zoning ordinances.
Oh. What are you gonna do with item C? Need a separate vote on that?
Construction drawings?
You tabled item D. You got on here at item C, so you gotta deal with it when we're done.
Discussing vote on construction drawings for estimate on Pickens Street part, project, the, the construction drawings.
We table it long with everything else.
Till next month.
Well, don't we have to vote on it?
Yes. You have a second?
Can we table it till we have a price on this project, what we're gonna spend?
It doesn't matter, Nathan. It's a roads and streets. It has nothing to do with parks and wreck. Why does that matter?
I thought this talking about the basketball court down here.
No, we're talking about the basketball court, the half court up at Pickens.
You're talking about the court down here that will work.
We've already spent money on this one up here. It's a rendering. We've already, we're already in phase one of it. You need to finish a project. You don't just table a project you've already spent all this money on.
Now, we're gonna spend sixteen more thousand on another rendering, right?
No, on, on drawings, David. You have to have construction drawings on anything you do, just like this project here. What other money?
We done spent on drawings.
That's your rendering.
Probably close to ten thousand last year, didn't we, for little drawings?
Guys, you need to read your books. It's kind of a process. And if you're gonna spend SPOS dollars, you need to know how to spend it. Obviously, you haven't read the, the book, Nathan. Go read it.
Yeah, there's...
So you know how to do a project. It's not spending wisely. You're not spending it all. You've got over a million dollars of people's money sitting in here, and it has nothing to do with the county, the city. This is not city funds. It's people's funds.
The people don't wanna say waste it either.
The people want the project.
That's both of them. We done...
That, it's not, this is not your meeting, and you don't get to say that. I'm just, he's asked a question, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it. I don't like...
We have walking trails. We're gonna have paved and stuff. They, nobody, just split it on that?
Not true.
I'm waiting over to see.
Not true.
Can we get something started instead of just bouncing it out from here to there?
We can. We have that, we have that, and Kelsey's getting us pricing on it. Is that correct?
I sent them an email that asked about, there shows us some of the companies that can do the concrete.
There you go.
You made a motion to table that one. I haven't heard a second yet.
I need a second for tabling, um, David's motion, please.
Is that table on it till we have a price on this?
Yeah.
Until what?
Until they get a price on the, the Kennesaw Drainage Project, which has nothing to do with SPOS money for parks and wrecks.
So, so you're, you're, so I understand. So we're gonna tell all those kids that they don't get any...
No, she's talking, she's got just as much say.
The motion and a second. Now you discuss it.
Okay.
Okay. So what I, what I don't understand is why, why the kids up in, on that part of the city can't have something nice to play in? I don't understand that.
Because you have two people that don't want it.
There's...
There's drainage issues.
There is not drainage issues. County's already been out here looking, and they can address it when we do.
They don't need to fix this park they never hold. They don't, what they tell us when it, they, they, the main thing that we got is to get them a bit.
That has nothing to do, that has nothing to do with this park up here.
What do you think that spot does when you pave some?
We got a drainage system up there. The, the drainage is the same as it's doing right now.
It comes right down here before we're...
It's still, it's doing it right now.
It would probably be better once it's, uh, been addressed.
And graded, and you've got a drainage system there in the front of it. Right now, you've got nothing.
Right.
I just, you know, it just seems a little bit absurd why we can't have something nice on that part of the town as well, and why it has to wait for a drainage project when we've got all that SPOS money sitting there. And the kids are the ones, I see those kids. They're, they're there all the time, trying to play, and the fence is all beaten in, and asphalt's all torn up. And it, and it's just not a very nice area for them, and I don't, and I don't think it's, um, right to withhold something nice for them where they have, have, have a safe place to play. I don't, I don't, I don't understand the holdup on that one. We've got the funds to do it, and obviously, the people wanna do it.
I wish we had enough area there for a, a rep, for facilities with restaurants and stuff.
Well, we don't, but they, they have just to have one to play, a nice area to play.
Most of those kids live right there that's playing there. Their houses is right there.
Do we need to finish voting, or?
You do.
Or wouldn't we have?
The motion was to table until there's a price on the Kennesaw Drainage Project, and there is a second.
So all in favor? We have a manageable quorum, so we're good.
Opposed, just for the record?
Three to two. New business.
Zoning ordinance.
Yep, zoning ordinance, sorry. Revisions.
I had gone back through to make sure everything was consistent in the sign ordinance, and so I think I've made that to be the case. I just tinkered a little bit further with making clear that it didn't say, for example, how many signs of residential property could have, and I think we would only want that to be one. And so I said that. Uh, it does already say, uh, how many, uh, signs of commercial property could have, and I just kinda cleaned it up a little bit. That was the only tweak I made since you saw it last time.
Any questions on zoning revisions? James? David? Nathan? Can I get a motion to approve the zoning ordinance revisions?
Make a motion. We approve the zoning ordinance revision.
I need a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor? You never know, thank you. New business, um, the two thousand nineteen Audit Report, Welch Walker and Associates.
We might as well table it, because you can't slate tomorrow.
Yes, I'm gonna table it.
This isn't something you have to vote on, so if y'all just decide if you want to have the audit report, you can just put it back on the agenda next week.
Just gonna have her, see if she can come in there. Discussing vote on the appointment of the levy officer for property taxes. We need a levy officer in order to have somebody to be able to come to with the property taxes from the, from the, what's the name of those folks? Deliquet Tax Services. And that's usually somebody that's in the office like Kelsey.
Basically, hard for them to proceed, they just have to have somebody that's appointed, just as a board person, which is perfectly fine, but if you want to, y'all, y'all point it out there. They asked to check in the charter, I couldn't find any, anything in the charter that specifically already named something. He said it does like a fifty-fifty shots, and that is it, isn't it? He said if not, then we just name it, and then they, they, they can go ahead and move on, so.
You could use some more work, couldn't you?
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
You want to just name that to be the clerk?
Yes. Please. Do you want to give a vote on that or not? Yes.
I think so, yes.
So, you made the motion, James?
I made the motion.
Okay, a second. Because I wanna ask, does that mean you have to do five phases?
I think they do, and we just take it under the court, I'll send another reporter. They'll do the paperwork on it, because I think that was a point of things that Jeff had specifically asked.
Somebody's doing it.
Yes, Jeff's like, please, not me.
Oh, I don't mind doing it, but I'll turn it more probably than they are.
It was something that we had asked them about to make sure that it was, everything was handled. So, I think I may have to take it down, just have them recorded, but they said in favor handle, they need those names.
All in favor for Kelsey being the levy officer?
I'm just gonna record it in a minute, because whoever the clerk is, is the levy officer. Just so that way they just...
Kind of a permanent appointment.
Discussing vote on using exemptions for the city property taxes.
This was one of the things that was in audit, just because, and I think Marina actually found this one, she was the clerk here, way back when, for Pickens Stoller. And I don't think it's ever been officially recorded in a minute that we go by county exemptions, so we need to have it officially recorded in a minute that we use county exemptions.
That would be the county in which you reside?
Yeah.
So, we can have different...
And I think Cherokee already does it. Because I know, especially with work with the VA stuff, I know that it's only applied to ours. So, but we just need to have it officially recorded in the minutes. And it was just something that the auditor brought up, and brought to our attention. So, I want it done, voted on in the minute, so it's official and taken care of.
Yeah, it's always been something that's been kind of worked with because of the two different counties. And trying to differentiate between those exemptions, and trying to keep track of what was what. It's easier to go ahead and do the county than it is to do state. It just makes more sense across the board.
Is it okay to do them with the different counties? I mean, is that, the city can...
It's already due, it's already happening. Because Cherokee County's collecting ours, and everybody Cherokee County stuff anyway. But we have different mileage rates and stuff anyway on each side, and...
And then when we upload the digest information into Assist...
It goes in by...
Yeah, so. And then if we can get Pickens to cooperate as far as doing the billing for us, then again, the exemptions would just flow right into place if we followed each, whichever address that parcel landed, Welch County.
Daniel Reeve says he's looking at, they're looking at it.
Yeah.
I sent it to Darren along the way, the thing that we have with Cherokee, because he was gonna present it to the board or whatever. That we need to have a vote on that, so I can officially report it, that we are recording it. Can I get a motion to use the county exemptions for the city property taxes?
I'll make a motion.
Second, please. All in favor? You may ask. Next up is to discuss the retaining, the retaining wall deterioration. Would you take the...
I did, I pulled up here, it was pictures of the current deterioration, and there's pictures of the other side with, I guess, the foundation from Jim that was there, that is just like a straight ten-foot drop-off, and it's been dressed in black. The retaining wall that was originally put down there for the basketball court was there. Apparently, it's not dynamic, so I think anything you ever, David and I were discussing earlier today, anything that would fight the tallness to be done with an engineer, and preferably not with wood, wasn't done right and been with. There's obviously ongoing drainage issues, which has caused this one to deteriorate very rapidly, and then it started to rot, fall apart, boards are coming in. The top fence portion, James was down there with something on it the other day, and he leaned on it to look at something, and the wind blew, and I'm sure James was about to go over that wall.
Yeah.
So, Ricky is working on bracing all of that, we've got a caution rope and stuff up.
It looks fine in this picture.
Oh, yeah, it's fantastic. You wanna go down and, I'll take some pictures of you. But it needs to be addressed. And we also need to address the one on the other side before some kid goes and pushes their friend off thinking, they're everything funny and... Not that I would've done that, I'm just...
You could contact Vince, come and get him to pull up a temporary fence beside the rock wall. Or put up a fence, I thought they wanted to make a wall like that, but this retaining wall, I think, completely replaced.
Yeah. I was, I don't know what the best fix is for that, because again, like you had said today, you probably cut it off and block or something, maybe you put the money in doing that before you do the court that's down there? Or do you put a Band-Aid and put another fence up to keep it safer until all of it's done? Or that wall needs to be engineered before you spend that kind of money on it? Exactly.
We need drainage, the drainage is the problem now.
Yeah, James had a look at it the other day, there's literally corrugated pipes that come up out of there, like a foot and a half, like just sticking up, like they're just catching rainwater.
Yeah, they're way below the ground.
Which opens up another whole big worm, because what are your long-term plans for this area?
Because it's like you're, if we're gonna do something there, we can't just throw a bunch of money at this.
And in order to repair this, it would not be covered by the loss, you would have to...
The project.
Replace, a replacement should be.
Yeah, I mean, you would literally have to replace all of this and have a foundation of what your overall project goal is gonna be.
And there are the renderings for that whole area as well. Remember that? The big part right there is. But I agree, they should just, I think the overall plan needs to be looked at, and not just throwing money to the bat, you know? It's gotta be safe.
Yeah, if we're gonna spend a bunch on a wall, I mean, we talked, we talked about in the past, expanding the park, it would be nice to incorporate the repair into the park, or...
That basketball court needs completely replaced, too.
Yeah.
We need to tank, so we need to demo the, if you get that piece of it, you demo the Rebecca Building, and then, and then you could level it out.
Maybe look at that whole plan again, address the whole plan that was already made for that whole area, because it was the ballpark and across, and then it encompassed that part as well. And maybe it could be done in phases.
This wall is gonna be fixed quick.
Is there a way, and again, I'm thinking about walls, to take off part of that fence and even move it in, like towards the road, a foot or two? Or just something to kinda keep kids from falling off? Because the way that is now, like if a kid went up and pushed on it, it would have fallen off. I mean, the way, I literally thought James was going to run the wall again, and I did not push it, I promise.
I don't know if we can, can we put a temporary chain link fence up in front of it?
All right, well, I had Ricky with him the other day, I sent him the other day to get two baskets, so he's gonna run a brace from the, he bought another piece to fill the back portion. So, there will be a brace that runs all the way from the bottom to the top, and I told him to do the two on each side as well. So, there will be something that runs from the bottom all the way to the top. So, there'll be some type of support brace to hold it.
And these big barricades off, and get those two or something.
Are you better off just taking off a section of it, and putting another smaller fence like in front of it, that's not attached to this portion of the big wall?
Do you see kids down there on it?
The play, the kids at the school right here?
I'm talking about the wall.
They play basketball on that court all the time, and they climb on everything.
Sometimes when you start barricading, put stuff up, draws, their fences...
I did call him today and just ask him to make sure that they stay off of it, but it's kind of, I know what you're saying, like as soon as you say don't, it's, you might as well put a sign with blinking lights that says, please play with us.
Some are, you rent temporary barricades.
Yeah, then come out, put a fence in it.
Yeah. They did, you know, put a tacky piece firm in there, where they had temporary, and it's all the way around it.
No, they, that wall there since we...
No, I'm saying, we're doing it through that area.
We do, we do. Michael Kip did those, too. There's no, there's no construction drawings, it's just a rendering.
What does the rendering show? Is this wall there?
It shows, it shows a wall there, but not on wood, it was cement, and then they had a, in front of it was parking.
But it's an overall vision.
It's a view, yeah.
Easily used to move forward as well, I mean, if that's what you're gonna do later.
Yeah, that could be done, but you probably won't, like I said, you'd want that whole side right there, you'd need to take the building down and grate it out a little bit, and then put a, put the wall up. Because once you get that building down, once you get that building down, the wall will probably go all the way down. Because the marble's coming off, I mean, literally, it's tall now. So, that retaining wall would go all the way down in front of it.
Is there a way to break it, so it doesn't have to have the wall?
Maybe on, it depends, it really sort of depends on the height, I think. If you're talking about the end down here where the marble is at, they could slope it.
Or maybe just a portion, it's like a portion of it, so that it's...
This end where the basketball court's at, they can't, but the other end, they could. Let's end down here.
Ricky said they backed up all that before, the girl that was lying about was brought in.
Right here.
They graved it's rock.
Yeah, you could slope, you could slope the, after this building's gone, but I mean, that's, that's it. You're gonna have some dirt brought in, just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that's probably ten feet.
Very good, well, that's what Mark had been saying that he means working here, because if it fall off, then we're gonna need the charrel board. And that was five minutes ago.
Send an email to Ron and ask him for recommendations for engineers. He's on that email with Gil Morton.
Of Cherokee?
Yeah.
Well, I thought he would say engineers, but the, the drainage.
Anything else regarding the, anything else regarding the retaining wall?
Could we get somebody to go out and, maybe try to get somebody to go out, put some temporary paints in or something?
We can, I mean, that's... That's a decision. Yeah. I wish, they should have a brace in the next day or so, just with the weather, the way it was today, you can't get the generator down there. You just have to tell them what you want to do, so I can...
I just got, you know, temporary paints and barricades, I did.
Yeah. They ought to be. Hey, that one said first with the... Or the rest down there.
Okay, anything else on the retaining wall deterioration? We'll find out, we'll get some engineering companies, and then get a bid from a couple of those.
You want a concrete wall or block or...
Whatever they suggest, probably, because of the drainage.
Well, say, while was real back where it was at, you could go with a poured wall and go four foot higher than, then it's great, and that'd be a parking room, too, you know? And get one off the street.
Definitely, no, with wall.
Can I get a motion to a juror?
I'll make a motion to a juror.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?